Good evening, everyone. It is now 5:30 and I call this public budget hearing to order. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? A motion has been made by Ms. Jones, her second by Ms. North, to approve the agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I would like to welcome everyone this evening. We are here tonight to receive input from the community on the budget priorities for the next school year. The superintendent recommended a budget in May and the board has tentatively adopted it. This will be the last opportunity for the community to, community has to speak to the board specifically about the budget priorities. The budget schedule calls for the board to adopt a final budget at our regular meeting on June the 22nd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Mr. George Kelicak? The board will hear everyone wishing to make comments about the physical year 24 budget. However, by law, if this hearing is still in progress at 6:00, we will call a recess for the hearing in order to conduct our regular scheduled meeting. And then, if necessary, reconvene the hearing after the regular meeting of the board. With that said, let me remind anyone wanting to speak to the board that this is the time when we all allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or engaging in behavior that disrupts the decorum of the meeting. I would like to welcome again Mr. George Kelicak.
Good evening, everyone. Citizens, superintendent, commissioners, citizens of Rockdale County. Bernard Shaw stated, "Those who cannot change their minds cannot change anything." I'm here today to provide economic data and tax data and solutions to change your minds from the eye of the Taxpayer Association members. Nationally, there's been an 88% increase in administrative salaries in the last 10 years. I asked our CPS to provide the same information to our membership and I was told I was going to have to pay $513.46 for this information. That is totally uncalled for in these times of inflationary times. I do not have that money. I have to spend $793 a month additionally because of inflation that we currently have. I'm turning this over to the board because this is business dynamic information that you can use to make good, solid business decisions as we move forward. Secondly, 77% of your funds come from residential partials, tax partials, and only 22% from commercial partials. With the average age now from 65 to 74, the fastest growing class here in Rockdale County, senior citizens cannot expect to fund any type of tax net increase, even with a reduced millage rate, which you've increased our taxes 47% over the last six years. The city's going up 15%. I ask you to look at this. You need to make some tough decisions. We have an 81.24% non-graduation rate. Out of 15,574 students, that's 2,900 students. I challenge this board and Rockdale County public school system to have a 100% graduation rate by the end of this decade, just like John Kennedy challenged the United States in 1963 to send a man to the moon. If we wouldn't have done that, we would not have rechargeable batteries today. So I'm leaving everybody with a package. We're passionate about this. We cannot afford a tax increase. You've had 473 students leave the system in the last 10 years at $11,003 per student. Where's that $5.2 million? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelicak. Do we have any other visitors that would like to speak? Roseberry? Okay. Come forward, please. Welcome.
Harik Roseberry. And I don't have much to say, but just comments from the last meeting I watched online and the budget cuts. I was concerned that those cuts would be done at school with the people on ground. That's in the schools every day with my child. I graduated from Conyers Salem High School, class of 2003. It wasn't easy for me. I went through Heritage, Alpha, and then back to, well, I started at Salem, then Heritage, Alpha, back to Salem and graduated with my daughter, who also graduated from Salem High School in 2021. My son is currently there and he's the easiest one of all of us. 3.9 GPA, scholar athlete, and he's doing very well. I just don't think he gets the, I don't think he gets the, I guess, support from the environment there at Salem. Salem seems to be like the redheaded stepchild of this county. The morale from when I was there is not there now. We don't see the kids at the games in the afternoons. We don't see parents there supporting their kids. And fortunately, I just retired and I have nothing but time to be nosy and all up in their business. But my peers that's my age, 37, are working now to pay these high taxes and can't be here to support their kids like they should be. So if those cuts come, I just recommend that they be in the school where the kids are and take them from this office right here. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Roseberry. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Okay.
We are now at the end of our public hearing, physical year 24 budget hearing. Can I get a motion to conclude the meeting?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. North, second by Ms. Duncan. All in favor, motion carries unanimously. Good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education work session to order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Sandra Jackson-Lett.
That's an Akita Palmer.
Okay, a motion to approve the agenda has presented, has been made by Ms. Jackson-Lett and second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor, motion carries. Ms. Shirley Cheser will now present certificates and awards. Dr. Oats, please join me in recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of our students and their families. And our vice chair Heather.
Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, board members, Dr. Oats and guests. Tonight we will recognize several of our fastest student athletes from all three of our high schools. We'll begin with track stars from Heritage High School. The Heritage High School girls' track team took the number one spot and brought home the Georgia High School Association, or GHSA, 5A state championship in the four by 200 meter relay. Here are some of their season highlights. They include the GHSA 5A four by 200 meter state champions, the GHSA 5A four by 200 meter state record holders. They finished third in the overall GHSA 5A state track and field competition. They're the region eight 5A champs for the first time in school history. They're the New Rock County champions. They broke four school records. They have two all-state team recipients. Two of their athletes received track scholarships, and they've received several individual state placings that I will share when I call their names. So please join me in congratulating our state champion relay team members. Students and coaches, when I call your name, please come up front to receive your certificate and remain up front for a group photo. First, we have our region champion in the 200 meters, and she is Mackenzie Burnett. Fifth in state for both the 100 meters and 200 meters, Alyssa Crump. Sixth in the state in the triple jump, Insaiah McGee. Third in the state in the 100 meters and sixth in the state in the 200 meters, Jory Savage. We'd also like to recognize the heritage coaches. We have Coach Russell Thomas. And Coach Freddie Jones. I believe Ms. Ken is here and ready to take a picture. There she is. And parents, if you'd like to come up and take a picture, you're welcome to, but we'll also post them on our social media site, so. They're on all three, Twitter, Facebook. Oh, absolutely.
One, two, three. Party one more time. One, two, three.
The Salem High School Running Knolls Track and Field program, made up of mostly freshmen and sophomores, defied the odds with their top performance at the GHSA 3A state track and field championship in Albany. The boys' four by 400 meter relay team ran some of the fastest time in the state all season long. At the regional four 3A championship meet, they took first place and repeated this accomplishment again at the GHSA 3A sectional B championship. This earned them a coveted spot in the state championship finals. They finished sixth place in the state with their fastest time of the season of 3 minutes 27.25 seconds. This team brought Salem back to the state relay championship for the first time since the 2015-2016 school year. Please join me in congratulating these Running Knolls and their coaches on an outstanding season. First, we have LaTaraun Splemming. Jacoby Davis. Donovan Lewis. Kendrick Rich. Johnny Sterling. And they're joined by their coaches, Coach Dr. Lonnie White. Coach Alec Jacobs. And Coach Delvin Denham. And board members and Dr. Oats, Dr. Lonnie White would like to make a brief presentation on behalf of the track team while they're here. This is Jackson-Lett. Would you mind coming down to be a part of this picture, please? You need some of them to go in the risers. She gave me good directions, Dr. Oats. Perfect. Congratulations. And again, parents, we'll post this on our social media site, just in case you don't get that picture. You can go out the bar, take it from us. Next, we will recognize both the boys and girls' track teams from Rockdale County High School. Each team was GHSA 6A, Region III runner-up. First, we'll recognize the girls' track team. Some of their season highlights include third place at the Grayson Invitational, fifth place at the Collins Hill Invitational, third place at the Javion Oliver Invitational, fourth place at the Locke Johnson Invitational, third place at the New Rock Track and Field Championship, fifth place at the BSN Tiger Tune-Up, and as we mentioned, they are the GHSA 6A, Region III runner-up. Within this team, the four by 200 meter relay team also won sixth place in the state. So please join me in congratulating the following student athletes. The state, sixth in the state in the four by 200 meter relay, Dani Donald. Sixth in the state in the four by 200 meter relay, Imani Asbury. Sixth in the state in the four by 200 meter relay, Nakia Jimmott. Sixth in the state in the four by 200 meter relay, Trinity Accree. A 6A, Region III runner-up, Chloe Johnson. Six, 6A, Region III runner-up, Jordan Jackson. Six A, Region III runner-up, Jayla Cash. We'd also like to recognize our coaches. She, 6A, Region III runner-up coach, Coach Keela Thomas. Another 6A, Region III runner-up coach is Coach Everett Nicholas. And rounding out the team is 6A, Region III runner-up Coach James Hughley. And I'll ask our coaches to stay up so we can recognize our boys. And ladies, congratulations to you. And now for the Rockdale County High School boys' track team. Some of their season highlights include third place at the Grayson Invitational, fifth place at the Collins Hills Invitational, third place at the Javion Oliver Invitational, fourth place at the Locke Johnson Invitational, third place at the New Rock Track and Field Championship, fifth place at the BSN Tiger Tune-Up, and as we mentioned, they are the GHSA 6A, Region III runner-up. Within this team, the four by 200 meter relay team also won sixth place in the state. So please join me in congratulating the following student athletes. The state, sixth in the state in the four by 200 meter relay, Dani Donald. Sixth in the state in the four by 200 meter relay, Imani Asbury. Sixth in the state in the four by 200 meter relay, Nakia Jimmott. Sixth in the state in the four by 200 meter relay, Trinity Accree. A 6A, Region III runner-up, Chloe Johnson. Six, 6A, Region III runner-up, Jordan Jackson. Six A, Region III runner-up, Jayla Cash. We'd also like to recognize our coaches. She, 6A, Region III runner-up coach, Coach Keela Thomas. Another 6A, Region III runner-up coach is Coach Everett Nicholas. And rounding out the team is 6A, Region III runner-up Coach James Hughley. And I'll ask our coaches to stay up so we can recognize our boys. And ladies, congratulations to you. And now for the Rockdale County High School boys' track team. Some of their season highlights include third place at the Grayson Invitational, fifth place at the Collins Hills Invitational, second place at the Javion Oliver Invitational, first place at the Locke Johnson Invitational, second place at the New Rock Track and Field Championship, second place at the Stockbridge Tune-Up, GHSA 6A, Region III runner-up, and 13th overall at the GHSA State Meet. And within this team, the four by 400 meter relay team went all the way to become both the region and state champions. Three other team members also placed in the state rankings, which I will call out when I call their names. So please join me in congratulating the Rockdale County High School boys' varsity track team. Four by 400 meter relay state champion and region champion, also winning fifth in the state for the 400 meters is Nicholas Jefferson. Four by 400 meter state champion and region champion, Macki Bray Moore. Four by 400 relay state champion and region champion, Finley Charlerie. Four by 400 meter relay state champion and region champion, Joshua Jackson. Fourth in the state in the triple jump is Najib Anderson. Seventh in the state in the 200 meters, Micah Ruffin. A 6A, Region III runner-up, James Miller. 6A, Region III runner-up, Jeremiah Hunt. 6A, Region III runner-up, Desmond Martin. 6A, Region III runner-up, Joshua Frazier. 6A, Region III runner-up, Marcus Williams. And 6A, Region III runner-up, Justin Opuku. And we recognized our coaches earlier, but again, we would like to recognize them for their work with the boys' team because they have awards on both the boys' and girls' side. Coach Keela Thomas, Coach Everett Nicholas, and Coach James Hughley. And your coach, Nathaniel Williams, would like for you to come up and be a part of the picture. Elijah Garner as well. Definitely want them whole team up. All right, so we definitely have a big group. So gentlemen, would some of you mind stepping up on the risers for us, please? And that's.
She gave me good directions, Dr. Oats. Perfect. Congratulations. And again, parents, we'll post this on our social media site, just in case you don't get that picture. You can go out the bar, take it from us. Next, we will recognize both the boys and girls track teams from Rockdale County High School. Each team was GHSA 6A Region 3 runner-up. First, we'll recognize the girls' track team. Some of their season highlights include: third place at the Grayson Invitational, fifth place at the Collins Hill Invitational, third place at the Javion Oliver Invitational, fourth place at the Locke Johnson Invitational, third place at the New Rock Track and Field Championship, fifth place at the BSN Tiger Tune-Up, and as we mentioned, they are the GHSA 6A Region 3 runner-up. Within this team, the 4x200-meter relay team also won sixth place in the state. So please join me in congratulating the following student athletes: The sixth in the state in the 4x200-meter relay, Dani Donald. Sixth in the state in the 4x200-meter relay, Imani Asbury. Sixth in the state in the 4x200-meter relay, Nakia Jimmott. Sixth in the state in the 4x200-meter relay, Trinity Akri. A 6A Region 3 runner-up, Chloe Johnson. 6A Region 3 runner-up, Jordan Jackson. 6A Region 3 runner-up, Jayla Cash. We'd also like to recognize our coaches. She, 6A Region 3 runner-up coach, Coach Keela Thomas. Another 6A Region 3 runner-up coach is Coach Everett Nicholas. And rounding out the team is 6A Region 3 runner-up Coach James Hughley. And I'll ask for coaches to stay up so we can recognize our boys and ladies, congratulations to you. And now for the Rockdale County High School Boys Track Team. Some of their season highlights include: third place at the Grayson Invitational, fifth place at the Collins Hills Invitational, second place at the Javion Oliver Invitational, first place at the Locke Johnson Invitational, second place at the New Rock Track and Field Championship, second place at the Stockbridge Tune-Up, GHSA 6A Region 3 runner-up, and 13th overall at the GHSA State Meet. And within this team, the 4x400-meter relay team went all the way to become both the region and state champions. Three other team members also placed in the state rankings, which I will call out when I call their names. So please join me in congratulating the Rockdale County High School Boys Varsity Track Team. 4x400-meter relay state champion and region champion, also winning fifth in the state for the 400 meters, is Nicholas Jefferson. 4x400-meter state champion and region champion, Macki Bray Moore. 4x400-meter relay state champion and region champion, Finley Charlerie. 4x400-meter relay state champion and region champion, Joshua Jackson. Fourth in the state in the triple job is Najeeb Anderson. Seventh in the state in the 200 meters, Micah Ruffin. A 6A Region 3 runner-up, James Miller. 6A Region 3 runner-up, Jeremiah Hunt. 6A Region 3 runner-up, Desmond Martin. 6A Region 3 runner-up, Joshua Frazier. 6A Region 3 runner-up, Marcus Williams. And 6A Region 3 runner-up, Justin Opuku. And we recognized our coaches earlier, but again, we would like to recognize them for their work with the boys team because they have awards on both the boys and girls side. Coach Keela Thomas, Coach Everett Nicholas, and Coach James Hughley. And your coach, Nathaniel Williams, would like for you to come up and be a part of the picture. Elijah Garner as well. Definitely want them whole team up. All right, so we definitely have a big group. So gentlemen, would some of you mind stepping up on the risers for us, please? ，请举手，孩子们，谢谢。Congratulations. Madam Chair, that confused our presentations. Take a brief recess so that we can congratulate our families. Oh, I pushed it. Sorry.
The coaches took them. Yes. I was holding it and she said, "Do you want me to just take it?" So I didn't think y'all would mind. Okay. Yeah, they got it.
They want to make your announcement that, you know, if they wish to leave it this time, especially if they're kind of mingling around. When you follow the meeting by the order, hopefully.
It is now 6:28. I would like to call the regular meeting back to order. We do have some visitors that want to speak to the board tonight. So this is the time that we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or engaging in behavior that disrupts the quorum of this meeting. I would like to welcome Ms. Charlotte Geller. Welcome, Ms. Geller.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Board Superintendent. Good to be here this evening. There was an accident on Salem Road. Tied everything up forever. The budget drives the millage rate. You have to adopt a millage rate to generate enough money to fund your budget. When you increase your budget, you have to generate, find the revenue to meet that budget. I'm looking forward to the public notice of the five-year tax digest that should be next year, next month, as to what the millage will be in the history of the last five years. The May financial report, I'd like to point out some functions that are below their budget that to me shows that they've been fiscally responsible. The education media services are only at 85% of their budget allotment. Business services at 88%, maintenance and operation at 89%. Other support services at 89%. I'd also like to point out that the two functions that are at or very close to their budget at the end of May, and they have one more month to spend, pupil services and improvement of instructional services. So based on this May report, where you were projecting a fund balance at the end of the fiscal year of $31 million, right now you're projecting $42 million. So you'll have June expenses, but it still looks like you might be above the projected fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. I'd like to see a proposed budget that shows that, shows the... With the previous fiscal year's numbers, to show the increase in each function year over year. Right now, the proposed budget just shows the current budget. Citizens, employees, and students and their families are continuing to look for ways to cut expenses, and it's getting harder and harder. I want to be assured that the district is doing the same. Always looking for ways to be more efficient and cut expenses. And any reduction in taxes from the increased senior exemption should be more than offset by the increase in assessment values. Also, an item on your agenda tonight, the rideaway expansion at Flight Show's Elementary. I like your rationale on that because I have to travel Salem Road every day, and today, there was a bad accident on it, and it was totally tied up. But rather than ask for any money for that rideaway, the value of improvements will more than offset that, which is definitely different from some of the properties on Salem Road that are having to go into...
Thank you, Ms. Geller.
...condemnation to get the right way. Thank you.
Mr. Kallcheck, please come forward. Welcome.
I can slow down a little bit this time. Let's just have a little bit of information. But I do want to, again, stress this importance of if you don't have a goal regarding your graduation rate, you're always going to be in mediocrity. That's why I say, let's follow John Kennedy's lead from 1963. Let's set a goal for 100%. We may not get there, but let me give you a few statistics. According to the Alliance of Education Research, it indicates that a 10% increase in graduation rate results in a 9% decline in criminal arrest rates. NPR's Claudia Sanchez said that in 2011, "It costs taxpayers $320 billion each year to catch up in lost wages, tax rate increases, healthcare, payouts, welfare, cost of incarceration." So Terry, I know you all are having these front porch meetings. I think it would be very wise to share this with both the chairman and the mayor. And look at this, because our education system drives the country, the nation, the world, Rockdale County. So it's really my belief, I think you have the talent in this room, along with citizens in Rockdale County, to assist in getting to that type of goal. I mean, it didn't take one person to get to the moon. It took many people. Just a few other pieces. I'm gonna email this to you. A high school dropout earns $260,000 less over a lifetime and pays about $60,000 less in taxes. Annual losses exceed $50 billion in federal and state income taxes for over 23 million high school dropouts aged 18 to 67. America loses $192 billion, 1.6% of its GPD, by this dropout rate. So healthcare costs estimated at $600,000 in high school dropouts, that's $58 billion or $100,000 per student. So I think we need to look at shifting our mindset. And it's great to have CTAE students and have 99% graduation rates in the top one-third of our students, but we need to look at these, this 20% that's not getting through our high school system. We've got the talents. Let's use it. I challenge you. I'll help you. We'll help you as citizens in Rockdale County. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's cabinet updates. Dr. Oats, please introduce your cabinet and provide your update.
Absolutely. So we have Dr. Brandy Johnson, I think, who's up first to give us an update on work-based learning.
Good evening, everyone. To the board and Chairwoman Pam Brown and Vice Chairwoman Heather Duncan, to Dr. Oats and the rest of the board members, and to the cabinet, and for Ms. Chesser for giving me this opportunity. And I would just like to say good evening and thank you. So I'm here to talk to you about work-based learning. And work-based learning and how we service the students in Rockdale County schools, we do work with the various high schools. And this is a picture of our students for this year and some of their various locations for placement. So students have to go through an application process in order to be accepted into work-based learning. And that, part of that includes recommendations from their CTAE teachers, also their counselor. And they also have to go through an interview process. And we look through their discipline and their attendance just to make sure that work-based learning is a good fit for them. Once they're in the program, we have four different categories that they're placed into. And so the majority of our students are in the internship category. Those are students who have completed at least one year of CTAE pathway course, and they actually are applying the skills that they've learned there. For ESDs, we have, like, less than 25% of our students can participate in ESD. They can only do it for one year. It is a paid position, but it doesn't necessarily relate to their pathway. So they may just have a job out there. We do have some students that are in co-op, and those co-op students are concurrently taking the CTAE pathway course, and their placement aligns with that course. And then we have youth apprenticeship. Those are students who, they're similar to interns. However, we track them after graduation, and they have to get a credential, and they also have to get 720 hours in their field. So pretty much, this is the basic timeline for work-based learning. Right now, we're in the process of assigning the students for this upcoming school year with their placements. We will have parent meetings starting in July with our parents so that they understand the requirements of work-based learning as well as the students, so they understand their expectations. And we talk about the grading policy for that. We start recruitment for the upcoming, the following year, very early. So starting in October, because we have to get the information to the counselors and the registrars by December. We also have to do at least two site visits per semester. So for every single student at every single employer, we also have to do, they have to have evaluations, so two evaluations per semester. And they evaluate their employability skills, like their soft skills. Do they come to work on time, so on and so forth? And they also, their actual job training plans. We do have, second semester, we'll have an end-of-the-year employer event. And also, we have an end-of-the-year report that is due to the state. So just a few highlights from this year. We had about... We had about a hundred-and-forty students that completed work-based learning with us this year. We had students that were in the top of the class at all of the different high schools. Our students clocked over two-hundred-and-seventy, two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars worth of wages that were earned by our students. We did over six-hundred site visits. And we had the valedictorian from Salem High School, Victor Montoya, was one of our work-based learning students, as well as a salutatorian at Rockdale County High School, Gazia Moment. When we have over a hundred-and-seventy business partners, and seventy-eight of those were actual employers. So we, these are just different pictures of our students in their workplaces. I do want to point out, the picture in the middle is Joy Whitman. She worked for City of Conyers, and she is pictured with Cameron Kelly, who's now the chief of operations for City of Conyers, and Vince Evans, the mayor of Conyers. She was recognized for that, and she's going to film in my alma mater, so we're excited about that. How do I click next or click? Okay, and this is just a video that one of our students put together.
Hi, my name is Tyler Phillips. I'm a workplace learning student out of Atlanta. I'm a videographer, photographer, and I'm in the twelfth grade.
What is the most interesting thing about your placement?
The most interesting thing on my placement is taking, producing new inventory, learning new, editing software, it's like bookshop.
And what is the most challenging thing you love about it?
The most challenging thing would be meeting deadlines, and also sometimes it's a little bit tricky at times, so I'd say that.
My name is Caitlin Hopkins. I am a junior, and I am at Rockdale County Elementary. And what is the most interesting thing about your placement? Um, I've been able to further my knowledge of filmmaking. My supervisor, Sean Kim, did push me to create my own project. And from that, I pitched it, I set up the interviews, and I was able to film and edit and come with a finished product that I can add to my portfolio.
And what is the most challenging?
The most challenging thing is getting out of my comfort zone by directing. Worked really well with the, in getting out of my comfort zone because I'm very much an introvert. And to interview people is about getting out of your comfort zone and talking.
Thank you. My name is Makindi Wexblenden. I am in twelfth grade, and I take, I'm an intern at Fred's, the RCA upside.
And what's the most interesting thing about your placement?
The most interesting thing about my placement is that I have a lot of creative freedom. So I get to create a lot of things I want to be able to do in class.
What's the most challenging thing about your placement?
The most challenging thing about my placement is finding the time to do a lot of the things you want to do. So there could be a list of things you want to do, but you have to narrow it down to do one, and then, you know, have a schedule.
Hi, my name is Alaric Seem, and my replacement is Rockdale P. McHospital. And I'm in twelfth grade.
And what would you say is the most interesting thing about your placement?
Honestly, that I actually get to do some hands-on things with my nurses that I didn't think I would be able to do, but they actually let me, so it's cool.
And what's the most challenging?
Talking with patients. That was the hardest, I think. Because I really had to understand what they were trying to say, how to help them out if I, if I was there. And yeah, that was one of the challenges. Work-based learning was a great opportunity, and you should definitely join.
One of our RCA audio video tech students, Gabrielle Bray. She was graduate, a senior that graduated. She helped to put that together, so we hope to use that to market. We also had a student who was a co-op student, Denaya Williams, got the Chick-fil-A Leadership Scholarship, so she got a twenty-five-hundred-dollar scholarship, and that was really nice. We had, we had an employer event in May, and at that employer event, we had signings. So three of our students actually signed. You have Benjamin Patrasco. He signed with Buffington Burns Electric, so he's worked there for two years. Pretty much every other day, he was there all day working with Buffington Burns, and they're actually going to assist him with going to school to get his credential there, and he'll continue working. You have Henaro Moreno, who is with, pictured with Nick Fisher, who's one of our employers of the year for Courtesy Ford, and he'll stay on with them. You also have Gabriel Chambers, who's at Lexicon Technologies, and he's one of our IT interns. And then also the education, the education pathway teachers had a signing day, and three of our work-based learning students participated in that. One of those students worked at Pine Street Elementary, one worked at the Early Learning Center, and one worked at Bright Future for Kids. Our Kimberly Cortez is our work-based learning student of the year. She's a healthcare student, and she actually is a certified clinical medical assistant, and she worked at Conyers Walk-In Clinic, and she's pictured with one of our other employers of the year, Lorna Wright. We also had our two employers of the year. If they look alike, they are. They're twins, Carlita and Marlita Sigmund. They are at Salem High School, and they have three school-based enterprises. And they had over approximately fourteen of our students that worked in one or multiple of our, of the school-based enterprises, and they were also employers of the year. Our business partner of the year was Kimberly Morris from One Source Foods, and it's a meat distribution company. And she had, they take students every year, and she also had a student that won the youth completer of the year last year. And then we have wonderful news. So we have our very own Heather Duncan's son, David Duncan. He was the Northeast Georgia Region Work-Based Learning Student of the Year, and we just left the GACTI Conference. And at the Work-Based Learning Award Ceremony, he was named the Youth Completer of Georgia.
Oh, wow.
And finally, we want to say happy retirement to Ms. Maddox. She has been an educator for over thirty years. She's been in the specific role of work-based learning coordinator for the last eight years, but of course, she's been in CTAE, and she worked with DCT and everything for several years. So she had a lot of service to work based learning, and I think that she was an excellent mentor for me. So that's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair Brown and Vice Chair Duncan, board members, and Dr. Oats, all of my friends, Brian Ingram, all my coworkers. We're glad you're all here tonight. We're gonna start off this evening with a, just a shout out to our kids from the Summer Bridges Program. Michelle Smith contacted me and says, you know, this is the first time a lot of our students that are on this trip were able to ride a commercial carrier. So they're involved in their summer school. I think they have another week to go, but that's just a little shout out to them and the hard work they're doing this summer. I have several action items tonight. The first one is the Facilities Memorandum of Agreement with Rockdale Career Academy GPTC Pod. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve extending the current Executive Memorandum of Agreement with Georgia P. McTechnical College, increasing continued use of the RCA GPTC Pod for classroom space year life one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. This agreement is continued upon the Superintendent's and General Counsel's approval. GPTC paid for the moving and renovation of this pod last year with plans to continue expanding their course offerings to our students, the community. This square footage space allows the college to support, provide opportunities for our students in technical training, and there is no financial impact to our system for that particular action item. The rideaway expansion for Rockdale D-Dot over at Flatshores Elementary School. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the donation of one, a point one-seven-nine acres of rideaway and a two-point-three-four acres of easement along Flatshores Elementary School Road, Front Angel Flatshores Road to Rockdale County for the improvements along the rideaway. This agreement is continued upon the Superintendent's and General Counsel's approval. The scope of the work is in support of the Courtesy Parkway Expansion over I-20, intersecting Flatshores Road just west of Flatshores Elementary School. So the value of the improvements to the turning lanes into our school, the stormwater improvements that they will provide, and the extension of sidewalks to the school exceed the current appraised value of the acreage that they perform. Their work will not impact the Flatshores Elementary School signage or the property we actively use by our school on that location. The next action item is the Facilities Tennis Courts Improvement Project. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve signature tennis courts as the vendor of choice for a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents for the repair, refurbishing, and equipment of selected tennis, school tennis site courts. Pricing is approved in the Cobb County Parks and Recreation Contract developed on a competitive bid result. So the rationale is that we will focus on the Rockdale County High School tennis courts, the four middle school tennis courts, and we'll include the lining of these courts for pickleball competition. Heritage High School and Salem High School will continue to use the Parker Road Tennis Court Facility until their major renovations are completed at those two locations, and we anticipate both sites' major work to be done next summer. This is a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, twenty-one, twenty-one dollars, forty-five cents from East Bloss Five, and that work will begin as soon as this contract, this action item is approved next week. We've got some major work on these, on all the tennis courts, and we're starting with those that we can make the biggest impact the fastest, and then move forward with the other ones with the major work that's got to be done. And then we have the ABM contract for our custodial services. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of ABM Custodial Services for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year for the sum of four million, two-hundred-and-four thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. This is the lowest co-op pricing received June one, twenty-twenty-three. And this contract obviously is continued upon the Superintendent's and General Counsel's approval. ABM will provide full custodial services for the district's two million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-one square feet as outlined in the contract with the specific scopes of services. The service includes all of our school sites, service centers, and support locations. This will come from the ARP and general fund, funding for this. We had pricing from this four-point-two to four-point-eight million dollars a year. We had three other companies that participated in providing this quotes through co-op pricing. And we felt, after talking with several of them, that the best move was, as late as we are in the school year, and we're already having our ABM folks in place, putting them on a tight, constringent contract with some oversight on their side and our side that's being added to the scope to provide the services that we need in our school system and what we expect to happen, and we'll give them an opportunity. Mr. Flanagan has done a good job putting in place a out for us if we see things do not go the way we need them to go. And we hope that this will prove to be a good move for us. And already they've, we've seen good action already this month prior to this even coming up, and they're knowing whether or not they'll get this contract. So that's recommended by the Superintendent for tonight. The last one I have is the school safety and security for the digital cameras. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the RRT Tech Risk Response Team, Inc. as the vendor of choice for the purchase and installation of the digital cameras throughout the district for one million, three-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, eighty-eight cents in the GPS number B-two-two-three-nine BM On-Demand IT Professional Services Contract. That's a contract that was bid out by Gwinnett County Public Schools, and the pricing is, we get to write on that same pricing. This project will replace analog camera systems in our schools with eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine digital cameras with IP addresses. Installation will commence upon the approval of this action item, and the work will be completed by July third, twenty-twenty-four. All school locations will be updated except for Pine Street and J.H. House, which are fully equipped with digital cameras at this point. This is a turnkey project by this company. The one-point-three-four-two-six-five-four will come from the state safety grant, which is a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, and from the federal safety grant, which is nine-hundred-thousand dollars. And it'll cover the full cost of the implementation of these digital cameras. You may recall back during COVID, we had fifty-thousand-dollar for each school, all of our schools except for three of them chose to add cameras at that point in time. Last fall, you approved, I believe, it was a hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars to fill those banks with these digital cameras. And so this will start the process of eliminating analog cameras and getting us the new IP digital cameras in place. And we need these desperately, and you have an attachment there that shows you where all these cameras will go in place. And that concludes.
Phil, before you go, I think Sandra also has a question. On the ABM custodial contract that we're about to sign, have you compared it to, have you spoken to other school districts that are using them?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have, we've used them for the last five years, I believe it has been. They, they took over GCA, and they've improved their services in some other locations. Part of our move with sticking with them is from consulting with some of their competitors who realize that the transition at this point in time of the year and some of the complications that happen with manpower, new equipment, the pipeline, getting equipment, getting supplies is an issue. So this, this will give them an opportunity to prove themselves, along with us to prove them. Some major things we've changed in the contract, right to the contract is the, they will have to have at least ninety-six percent of the positions filled, or there's a, by contract, a credit that we receive for every person under, under that number, which I think is the biggest issue we fought with this last year besides supplies that were in the pipeline.
And I do, I do know that we've been using them, and that's why I was asking because I know that we've been having issues with them. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not signing back on with them out of desperation versus this is what we actually need, and it's going to provide the services that we need in Rockdale County. And I do have a second question. It's the point-two-three-four acres, acres for the Flatshores, for the easement. Yes, that is the correct number because in your presentation, you said two-point-three-four acres.
Said it wrong.
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm.
The point-one part is the part that they will actually be building on.
The point-one.
Point-two gives them access to, to work that grain field and things if they need to come on our property.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Heather, for your comments, because I've had some of the same sentiments. Isn't that all? Okay. But so you're saying to us, if we halfway through the year and they're not doing what we need to do, we're just gonna get a credit? We're not gonna let them go?
No, we're gonna let them go.
Okay.
No, the credit, that is the, there's, there's a hundred-and-twenty that they should have in the district. If they get to a hundred, below a hundred-and-fifteen, then they owe us a credit per day, per person, a hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. We made it stiff enough that will cause any of our suppliers the opportunity to, to get somebody in place.
Okay, sounds great. My next question is about the cameras. And thank you for getting the cameras. Would that cover all school, or we still have some that's gonna be?
That will be all of our schools. The only additional areas that I will want to add some cameras will be to the stadiums, our three major stadiums, and then in some outlying places at the high schools. So we're, we're checking to cameras, remote cameras that can be wireless. There's some technology we're looking at there that we could place them. For example, Heritage High School in the back practice field, that we can place them high enough they can't be messed with, but yet we can get good camera visuals from there. But this will take care of all of our schools.
So I've noticed that it's the state funding and the federal safety grant. I know in the past, we talked about East Bloss. No.
No, East Bloss funds out of this.
But in the past, we had talked.
We have used East Bloss. We have, and we will as time rolls on, as we have those needs. But this is a grant that we can apply to that.
Okay, but my question is, would it been, previous being slated for East Bloss money, are we gonna use that money that we had allocated for these cameras to do something else for safety or just wherever?
Something else for safety within, anything within the scope of our East Bloss Five referendum.
Okay.
And Phil, just one point of clarification, piggyback off Sandra. The cameras that you're going to put at the stadium, will that be a separate proposal coming through or okay?
Yeah, that's included in this.
And this, the funds for those cameras will come out of the safety grant as well? Or will this now fall into the scope of East Bloss?
It'll fall somewhere else because we're, the purposing, moving with the, this particular contract is that we're getting the current pricing for these cameras, even though we'll install them all the way through to next July.
Okay.
So we will eat up most of this grant money. One's five-hundred thousand, one's a hundred thousand dollars. So we will eat up most of that money in cameras.
But the timeline is going to be just about the same in terms of trying to get it completed? The timeline to get them into the stadiums, what does that look like?
Well, we're, we're working on that now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Phil.
I have a quick question also about the cameras.
I have a quick question also about the cameras. Sorry. Are these cameras just exterior cameras in some hallways or are these the ones that are actually in each classroom?
These are, no, these are the safety. These are not the ones that fall into their purview in the classroom. The epic system. These are the safety security cameras throughout the system and on the outside of the building. These, and we're, we need to go to these digital cameras. We've needed to go for a while. The analog, just the, the ability to use those. I mean, there's just so much technology that's turned so quickly with these. And so this is a great opportunity for us.
Yes, sir. I'd hate to beat a dead horse regarding ABM, but we've had a contract with them for five years, right?
So we had initial contract ten years ago and we've been riding on a just automatic over and we've been in a month to month situation with them. Going to ARP and CARES money to pay. We needed an upgraded. Contract and so we have, we need to have a contract that's a new contract. So right along with that, I want to address this with something Ms. Duncan said, part of this increase is. The base pay that they, they're using, as we all know. Salaries and cost of labor jumped tremendously this last year. Just think about our bus drivers. We went from fourteen sixty five to. Twenty dollars and a little bit changed. And the same thing is happening in their market and, but we didn't negotiate, they didn't negotiate with us upfront. And we had a tough year, but their starting base will be at least thirteen dollars, which is competitive to some of those entry markets that those folks would work in, in our community.
Is it fair to say that it's not just last year that you fielded complaints from the, from the schools that they've had issues with ABM and getting. Getting quality service from ABM? Is that a fair statement?
I said this last year, yes. Prior to that, when we knew there was issues, administrators talked with us, we, we got results.
Okay, so the, the, obviously it was bid out. You said the, that it ranged between four point two and four point eight million for. The, the bids that came in regarding custodial service. My issue is if, if we have had custodial. Problems because of ABM, I mean, if, if we've had them for ten years and we consistently have been having issues. That's, you know, you can't get it right in five years. Why do you deserve a sixth year? But if they're the only. If they're the only alternative that we have right now, if it is pressing that we get somebody, a contract under somebody, my question is if they don't fulfill that contract, what is the alternative?
We'll fire them.
And who gets hired at that point?
Well, we have, we have two other options that were on the plate that we had looked and considered now. So let me, let me go back up to what the statement you made about their service currently. This last year is the first time in my, dealing with them because unfortunately. ABM is on my shirt when people are thinking about custodial services. It's under my division. This last year has been the, the tough year of getting results. And it comes right from corporate. And Dr. Oats and I met with corporate along with Mr. Hall. Two weeks ago, someone recently, and eyeball to eyeball. And I talked to that guy straight. I said, I know you're. Maybe that'd be you as a person, but you represent this company and I unloaded my heart. And my feelings and we had a good, a good conversation and we gave him. Two days to think about it before they responded back to us and we've got a good response from that gentleman. And so far they've, they've turned that corner. We're not married to them forever. And again, as Mr. Flanagan has done a good job writing that contract, if we have any issues personnel wise. Supply wise, whatever the case may be, that's not legit. I mean, we're going to be fair because, but if it's not legit, we're turning loose.
Excellent. Phil, thank you.
Absolutely. It's, it's, it's been, it's been a tough year for me to put up with. And I snapped my finger past it happened and not that I'm anybody's. That's a snap to, but we needed that response and if my people share with me, they have the concerns, we've had that. I've had to fight this year. And I think this is where we are. This is a good opportunity for us. Two of the folks that we were, we were courting for this were very candid with me, coming in, starting anytime without getting the contract. As early as March or April, it was going to be tough for anybody to come in and make a, make a difference. And so we've already seen a difference and we're going to ride it hard. And y'all share with Dr. Oats and he'll get with me if there's things that I don't know about. We'll, we'll, we'll beat it. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, Board Members and Superintendent Oates. I have two action items this evening, but I'm going to start with a partnership review. First, we have a review of our interlodge partnership, which helps us recruit international teachers to Rockdale County Public Schools. They do the initial screening of the applicants in whatever country they currently reside. And then they set up interviews, interlodge sets of interviews with me and the principals and we. After we interview those candidates, once they're selected, the visa sponsorship happens through InterLodge, not Rockdale County Public Schools. The NLR staff provides training and support to the international candidates throughout their employment, but they are also a part of everything that we do with the school system because they would be Rockdale County employees. And they then hold. A certification through the Georgia Professional Standards Commission. So it's an international teacher certification. All teachers are certified and have a minimum of five years' experience. We did an anonymous survey with the principals who were using InterLodge this school year. And one hundred percent of those respondents agreed that InterLodge was a beneficial resource for their location. And that they prefer this resource to a long-term substitute teacher. A hundred percent of the respondents are retaining those twenty two, twenty three hires for the upcoming school year. Some of the quotes that they've put into their surveys. While the InterLodge teachers require significant training to transition to educational expectations in the U.S., I would rather provide this support for our students than a long-term sub. Another quote that we have here, the InterLodge teachers for Salem High School have been excellent additions to our staff and are equal to our certified teachers. That have taught in Rockdale County Public Schools for many years. So that brings us to the first action item. Recommendation, the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the use of InterLodge to supply hard-to-fill teaching positions during the twenty three, twenty four school year. The renewal, renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. The rationale, the approval of InterLodge will allow students to receive instruction from experienced educators that are highly qualified in their content area. This supports the Rockdale, uh, RCPS Strategic Plan Initiative one A three, recruit beyond the local area to state, national, and international. Financial impact is a minimum of eighty four thousand dollars for twelve current teachers and not sixty one hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. And I can pause here for questions about InterLodge before moving into the next portion.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I noticed that you say you spoke with the principal and different staff that you all talked to the students because. Were there language barriers with some of these teachers with the children?
It was an anonymous survey of the principals.
But no input from the students. And so my question again, was there a language barrier between those teachers and those students?
Not that I was made aware of.
So we didn't interview any students?
No, not for this survey. No, ma'am.
Any particular reason why the survey of the students wasn't conducted?
Um, I wouldn't say there's a reason why of the feedback that we were getting from the principals throughout the school year was that never came up and. I would have to look into that. I want to make sure we don't do or say anything discriminatory.
I get that, but we need to be able to have, we need to have effective teachers as well. So the question then becomes. Do we know how these teachers or their students performed in testing this year?
I'll have to look into that for you.
I think we very much would need to know that information if we want to continue a contract with InterLodge. If, if they're effective, great, let's renew the contract, but we don't know the quality of education that the students are getting from these teachers. I don't know if we can, we can effectively vote or knowingly vote on this action item.
Well, I can say that the teachers are evaluated the same as all other Rockdale County Public Schools employees. They're not treated differently because they're from a different. Place.
In this case, if I may interject, and I appreciate you making that point. The, the significance of the principals completing the survey in this instance is that administrators are evaluating these teachers by way of direct observation. And, and inclusive in the opportunity that the principals had to provide feedback to human resources. Would be if there were any significant language barriers that were reported to administration by students. That hasn't come up and so I think it's important for us to, to look at these HR innovations in the context of. The alternative. And we know that the alternative in most cases from these innovations such as InterLodge, and you will be talking about Elevate K twelve in just a moment. Would be. The hope that we can acquire a long-term substitute teacher who in most cases don't have. Nor even close to the content proficiency. So I think it's important to keep that all in perspective. It's not merely about. So we didn't survey a student, but we're surveying the principals who are responsible for gathering all the data at the school level. And believe me, they'll get, they'll hear concerns from students like they do on everything else, right? At the school level. So I, I think that's very, very important. Certainly, we, we have no objections to getting student feedback going forward, but clearly. I can count on our principals to tell us if this is a beneficial resource for them. They're at the school sixty hours a week, immersed in their schools and their school culture, and they're doing direct observations of these teachers. So I just wanted to share that broader concept.
I do have a question for both, both of you, either one of you can answer, and I haven't heard anything negative because. I do know people that have come through the program and they're quite qualified, but again, language barriers, language barriers. I'm a foreigner myself. But my statement is, or my question is. When you're recruiting the teachers through InterLodge. Are you trying to focus on those difficult subject areas, whether it's foreign languages or mathematical qualifications, science and those kind of things? Are we just trying to fill empty seats?
Our focus has been math, science, special education, and world languages.
Okay, and the second part of that question, are you focused on any particular area of the world? Or you just take what they get, what they give you kind of?
Different agencies recruit in different countries. The. Agency we've worked with so far, I've met teachers from India and Jamaica primarily.
Yes, like I said, I am aware of the program and know people that work through the visa program that way, but I, I was concerned more about the foreign language program in Rockdale County as it. In regards to both Spanish and French that we tend to struggle with those teachers. And we just wanted to know if they focus on getting teachers from those regions of different countries that can teach French and Spanish or foreign languages. You don't need to answer that. It's more of a statement than anything else.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have one follow-up question. How many participants responded to the survey?
Um, five.
And how many, how many schools had InterLodge students in Rockdale County, or excuse me, InterLodge teachers in Rockdale County?
Five.
Okay.
I have a question for you. Are these the classrooms that are virtual, the teachers are virtual? These are, are these teachers actually from InterLodge?
They are recruited through InterLodge and they are in person in our classrooms.
But the financial impact is only eighty four thousand for twelve teachers?
I think it's comparable to like a finder's fee. They help get them here and get them settled, but we pay their regular salary.
Okay.
That amount there is what we paid to InterLodge.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I'll proceed to the next part, which is our partnership with Elevate K twelve, which is similar to what Ms. North was asking about. For this part of the presentation, I'll be joined at times by Ms. Nora Navarro and Dr. Denise Richardson. Nora is with Elevate K twelve. And you'll join in just a second, but first I want to share with you all. Come up, I'm sorry. Yeah, I wanted to share with you all the superintendent's charge as, as districts, as districts all across the state and indeed the country. Are confronted with significant staffing challenges. It is incumbent upon us to provide a menu of staffing options designed to mitigate. The overall staffing difficulties we are experiencing. With that being said, our first choice remains a highly certified teacher in the classroom. When we're struggling to do that as we are right now, we partner with other organizations. As you all approve for us to use Elevate K twelve to kind of mitigate some of those challenges this school year, we're going to do a partnership review. And Nora is going to help us with that.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. So I just wanted to start by giving you all a refresher on what Elevate K twelve is and what we do. So this video here is just a quick little snapshot of an Elevate classroom, one of our district partners in Douglas County, Georgia. So what we do is we bring live, high-quality certified instructors into your classrooms by live streaming them. On your bell schedule. Again, if you're unable to allocate and find an in-person local certified instructor. So the learning is completely synchronous. They're, they're not self-paced. There's a live teacher. Live streamed in there every day. It's the same teacher with the, the Rockdale students. And this consistency is really important to us because we want to make sure that students are able to build relationships with the teachers throughout the program. There are four main components when thinking about an Elevate program. So the first pillar would be quality teaching. First and foremost, right? That's the most important thing is that certified instructor. So these are content experts. And we have a pool of over fifteen hundred instructors. On average, they come with thirteen years of teaching experience in the classroom. The second pillar would be impactful curriculum. So we've worked really closely this year with Dr. Richardson to make sure that our, our curriculum is aligned with Georgia. National and national state standards, but also we match the RCPS scope and sequence. We can also make adjustments throughout the year on a curriculum. So if rigor needs to be increased or decreased. You know, we can make adjustments and we stay in touch throughout the year as well to make sure we're meeting those standards. The third pillar would be our technology. So this is something that makes us pretty unique. We have our own proprietary platform. And it's built for the education space. So the RCPS students each have a login to the Elevate platform. And there's a lot of tools that we've built within the platform to keep the students engaged throughout the program. Final pillar is going to be that in-person support. So part of the modality in the classroom is that. There is an RCPS employee that is physically there, of course, with the students to manage the classroom. We do train these individuals ahead of a program and we also supply you with. Additional training for that individual throughout the course. So they're not really left alone. They're, they're supported by our team as well. Taking a look at the program's scope from last year, from our first partnership. So it was a full-year program. Covering forty periods and serving one thousand and eighty Rockdale students. Here are the schools that participated in the partnership. So Salem High School, Rockdale Career Academy, Open Campus, Conyers Middle School. Edwards Middle School and Barksdale Elementary. Again, we focused on those really hard-to-fill areas. So geometry, algebra two, physics, earth science. Middle school math and Spanish enrichment. We all worked really closely together again on making sure that we were meeting those standards. Taking a look at how the Rockdale Elevate instructors built relationships with students. So we sent an anonymous survey to all the students who participated in an Elevate class. And we received one hundred and forty one responses. Seventy seven percent found that their instructors were supportive. Eighty seven percent found the classroom coach to be helpful. So the classroom coach is what we call the RCPS employee. Eighty nine percent found learning to be fun. Eighty seven percent feel that they're learning new concepts and that they're more confident in their skills. And ninety three percent believe the Elevate platform has helped them succeed in class. So these are really great results and it's really great to hear, you know, directly from the students that they're feeling positively, positively about the learning they're receiving from their Elevate instructors.
So here we have some feedback from several, well, two students at Rockdale Career Academy who. Were in the physics class there. The first one is Denise Cross at Paradise High School. She's a rising senior. And I'll hopefully play hers properly. Let's see here. Okay. Why don't you start by introducing yourself and then I'll ask you the first question.
Okay, hi, I'm Denise Cross. I'm a junior at Heritage High School and I attend Elevate for physics.
How does Elevate compare to your traditional class with a teacher in the classroom?
Elevate to me personally is about the same. She's right there visually on a video. You communicate with her easily through our. The chat, raise your hand tool, any of that. She's always accessible to me.
And are there any improvements you would recommend for the class?
Probably hands-on things, labs, not everything online sometimes, but the online aspect is fine. You get used to it.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Hi, my name is Moni Swan. I am a senior attending Howard University next year for the fall of twenty twenty three.
And where do you go this year?
I am saying Salem. I attend Salem High School.
What class are you taking through the Elevate program?
I take physics.
And how does this compare to your traditional class with a teacher in the classroom?
It compares because on the platform for Elevate, you could still like see the teacher teaching or whatever she pulls up on the platform, you can read it. And if you have questions, you just ask the teacher.
Would you say it's easy to communicate with the teacher?
Yes, it's easy. We have a class chat. If we want to ask questions and we want to see what, if the other students have the same questions and the teacher just answer them, or if like we have shy students in the classroom and we just chat with the teacher privately.
Can you ask questions outside of your class time?
Yes, it's an email on the platform. We can reach the teacher at.
Okay. And what improvements would you recommend?
I don't recommend any, any improvements. It's really no cons I could think of. I actually like for Elevate because it's, it's a good platform to learn on. Like I said, the teacher is still teaching like she's in a traditional classroom.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So again, we did a anonymous survey of the administrators using Elevate K twelve in their schools. Um, seventy-five percent of those respondents expressed that they would like to retain the Elevate K twelve option for the upcoming school year. Um, seventy-five percent of those who used it for the majority of the year found it to be a beneficial resource. So there was one additional for the first um, bullet point, there were four respondents. For the second one, there were five. One person commented that they didn't use it all year. So for clarity there, we just noted that those who used it for the majority of the school year found it to be, seventy-five percent found it to be um, a beneficial resource. And some of the quotes that we were given, I was initially concerned about alignment with our curriculum, which can still be improved. However, Elevate students completed a sixth grade science C U A given to all other students and outperformed them. Another quote we have here, I like that you have a content expert to teach the course versus a sub. So again, this is just one option that we're trying to use to, um, mitigate the teacher shortage. Next, Dr. Richardson will give us some of the curricular feedback.
Good evening. I had the pleasure of working directly with Elevate this year. Again, we followed Dr. Oates' charge to make sure there was content proficiency. That was the ultimate goal, content proficiency. We wanted to ensure that our students receive the learning experiences aligned to the expectation for our district. Um, initially, when it was implemented, me and Nancy, uh, our math coordinator, actually met with the Elevate team, went through their standards, aligned the things that we could align directly to our curriculum. We removed content that wasn't aligned directly to the state standards and we made some adjustments when possible. Along with that, we met with the Elevate team to expose them to the type of training that our teachers receive. And we talked to them about the type of training their teachers receive. So we understood that there was an expectation of um, higher learning expectations for our district. Um, not only that, meeting with that team, I had the opportunity to go into the buildings to observe the Elevate classrooms. I went to the physics classrooms as well as the earth science classrooms. The, what the students said is exactly what I saw in that classroom. There was engagement. You could see the students actually talking to each other side to side, or you can actually see them communicating in the platform. I noticed one specific student who seemed to be kind of quiet in the classroom. I thought the student was not engaged, but I kind of peeked over their shoulder to see that they were actually emailing the teacher in the background. And you could see the teacher was responding to that specific question in the learning experience. Again, knowing I'm a science person, um, it's an unfamiliar mode of learning for most of us. However, the one thing I learned from talking to the students, they're familiar with it. They were okay with it. And I appreciate that when we identified students that that was not their mode of learning, they were shift and we owned the student, the building leaders owned shifting those students out of the classroom, putting them into a traditional setting that aligned to their learning needs. What I'm going to share with you are some specific data points. I will say that let me go back to the slide to make sure I'm hitting this. And Phil said he was timing me, so I'm gonna dial down the passion. But you all know, we're talking about teaching and learning, so I can't help but to get passionate about teaching and learning. So again, when looking at those classrooms, I wanted to see how the classroom was managed. I wanted to see how we had a teacher that was virtual as well as the parent in the classroom managing the classrooms. And again, there was no shift between what I saw in the Elevate classroom and what I saw in the traditional setting. Um, also again, we looked at the alignment between math and science, and there were some adjustments that we had to make. Um, some of those Elevate was able to honor, but the ones they could not honor, as an instructional leader, I was comfortable with those shifts with our students. Here's some data points. The data that you're looking at on the screen is our star data. That's our universal screener. We have three windows that we administer throughout the year and some optional windows. The window that you see on the screen today is actually the March window. I want to draw your attention to the last line that says Elevate EMS. This is the data specifically from Edwards Middle School. Here you see the beginning level is at fifteen percent. The data that you're not seeing is on the window for August, which is our baseline data. It's showing that that level for beginning level was thirty percent. So again, that's a shift that you want to see in the traditional classroom. I'll also bring your attention to where it says EMS, eighth grade. That's traditional, those are the traditional students in that classroom. However, when we go to the, um, August window, that rate of beginning was actually at forty-two. So again, you're seeing there's not much of a shift between the traditional classroom setting as well as Elevate. And we do see some shifts with the distinguished, um, Elevate on the chart because you see it listed at nine percent in August, that was at two percent. So those are the shifts that you would like to see again. I consider this my control group because it was the same group of students. They started at the same point and you see the shifts that are comparable to the general classroom. I'm gonna now shift to tenth grade. Tenth grade again, starting with our August window. This is the data that you're not seeing on the screen. It's listed at thirty-three percent at the beginning rate. When we shift to the August window, no, sorry, the March window, you're seeing forty-eight percent. This group of students, I would not consider a control group because we knew we had some, we know we had some shifting in staff, staffing at this point. So at this page, I think at Salem, they merged two classes together. So again, you're not seeing a control group here, but again, when you're looking at the numbers, you're not seeing a significant difference between that traditional classroom and the Elevate classroom. The same is here with the eleventh grade data. You're seeing some shifts here. I'll bring your attention to the line that says fifty-four percent for the March window. That, um, score for the August window was twenty-five percent. But again, even with the twenty-five percent, it did increase, but looking overall, comparing August to March, it's still comparable to the traditional classroom. Phil, I'm honoring my time. But now we're looking at the grade six data. With grade six for science, we don't have a universal screener. We do use pre-assessments to diagnose students' learning as they enter the learning experience. The Elevate students were not part of that pre-assessment window. However, I did want to go back and honor Dr. Reese's, um, request to assess those students at that second window for our common unit assessments. When looking at that common unit assessment, you do see where there are some instances where the Elevate students actually outperform the students in the traditional classroom. Again, I know with this group of teachers, because I work very closely with this team, that, that the traditional classroom teachers were, two of them were new to the building and we consistently work with them to coach them as well as provided them opportunities for additional professional learning. So when looking at the data overall, I see that there, this is just one snapshot. To truly gauge the full impact of, uh, of Elevate, we would have to really look at some historical data. If we continue with, um, Elevate, we're committed as a team to gather that historical data, to monitor and work with the administrators at the building level to ensure that we strategically place students in the appropriate setting. And if they're looking at data and we identify it's a deficit or a change, a change needs to be made, we immediately re-advice the parent, speak directly to that student, and we begin to make those shifts. I will go back to the Salem team. When they notice the deficits with the students, they immediately put a plan in action to provide additional support for a teacher that was on staff. But again, this is just one data set that we're looking at to fully understand the impact of learning. We would need historical data to paint the full picture. I will say even as a, um, traditional student myself and seeing the Elevate learning experience and seeing my own child who takes about fifteen credit hours to sixteen credit hours a semester, over half of those was through his experience that was very similar to this. I'll say that this is not the ideal situation for all students, but I have to also admit there are some students that thrive in this type of environment. So again, that's the curriculum side of things. We'll continue the support with any um, implementation of any innovative practice to support our students. Thank you.
And this is just a review of what has been done thus far this year.
Yep. So, um, if, if you all do decide to approve a renewal of our, of our partnership, um, we've collected a lot of feedback over the past year on what we could potentially do to make our partnership even better. Um, so that would begin with a curriculum walkthrough. So as Dr. Richardson said, obviously curriculum is something that is very important to R C P S. And so we've already actually met, um, to discuss the new Georgia standards alignment. Um, and pending approval from you all, if, um, we move forward, we will be meeting more to just get ahead of the curriculum walks and make sure that everyone is really comfortable with curriculum in the upcoming year. Um, the second thing would be a data sharing plan. So, um, we're gonna identify quarterly dates that, um, our team can come down and review the data all together and have a planned meeting so that we can make sure that we're trending in the right direction. And then finally, a parent-teacher communication plan. So, um, something that's great about, you know, starting a partnership during this time is that we can plan to have, uh, the Elevate instructors participate in those important things like parent-teacher night, um, parent-teacher conferences, curriculum night, um, open house. So, um, we can plan on making sure that the Elevate Rockdale instructors attend those nights so that the, the parents can feel involved in getting to know their, their student's instructor. Um, and then the last thing we would plan on doing is contributing data for I E P and five oh four meetings as well. Again, pending your approval, here's the projected partnership timeline. Um, so May is when we really began contract scoping and where we thought those hard-to-fill areas might be um, for a potential, uh, upcoming partnership. Um, Rockdale can also identify those instructors that they really enjoyed over the past year and let us know if they want to retain those instructors for the upcoming year. Um, and then in June is where we, you know, we meet and see if, if you would all approve, um, a renewal of our partnership. And then we would begin planning, um, schedules and finalizing parent-teacher conference participation dates. In June, late June and early July, um, what would happen is we would finalize the program scope, align on curricular requirements. Um, we would begin training the Rockdale employees that would be physically in the classroom with the students. And then we would finalize those dates for the data sharing plan.
So when it comes to the action item, I'll read this recommendation. I need to read for my paper because it's too far for me. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the use of Elevate K twelve to supply hard-to-fill teaching positions during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The renewal is contingent upon the approval of the contract by the superintendent and general counsel. The rationale is as follows. The approval of Elevate K twelve will allow students to receive instruction from a live teacher who is highly qualified for the upcoming school year. Due to the teacher shortage, positions such as science, math and world languages have been more challenging to fill. R C P S will be allowed to collect the F T E for each student taught in this environment. The cost represented is based upon thirty-four sections equalling six teachers. The cost of six teachers equals five hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Using the average cost of a teacher equalling ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars. Principals using this resource, we use their point allotment for the Elevate K twelve teacher position. Financial impact is a minimum of five hundred nine, eight hundred seventeen dollars, not to exceed eight hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars. And just to stress, this would be an option if we were unable to fulfill, fulfill the positions the, uh, preferred way. And that is it. And I can see who has the first question.
You know, I have a question, Michelle.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I saw you looking at me and smiling. I do want to start by making a statement and commending, um, Dr. Oates, your team, teaching and learning. Um, Denise, we get the passion. We feel it. We feel it continuously. Um, I love that you guys are taking the approach to meet the needs of all of our students, whether it's through the international program or through this online platform. I do have a question regarding the finances though. So we're about to spend half a million dollars for six teachers. The, the persons that are in the classroom, the assistants, who's paying for them?
The classroom coaches, the paraprofessionals?
Yes, and let me, um, I'm gonna just make it one big question. So the paraprofessionals, would they traditionally be in the classroom or are we having to put those persons in the classroom to support the teachers because they are remote?
We were having to put them in because, for supervision purposes and to help the children with the, um, technology acquisition.
Is that coming out of the ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars per teacher? Or are we paying ninety-three thousand, one hundred per teacher? Plus paying extra for those six persons?
And ninety-three thousand is the, is the equivalent of a teacher, but if we don't, and so the paraprof is apart from that. But what I will say is kind of, this just gave us the, um, parameters. So there are times when, for instance, at Open Campus this year, we needed one segment. So we used, uh, Elevate program for one segment there. We didn't use ninety-three thousand dollars. We used, I guess, the equivalent of a, a sixth of that.
Okay.
But to answer your original question, that is outside of it. If this was, if that person was teaching for us the full segments, the paraprof is on top of that as well.
And these are paraprofessionals that wouldn't traditionally be in the classroom. So we are setting aside those persons because we have to supply, um, support this platform. So in, in, in reality, the minimum financial impact is the five hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars plus to employ six additional persons.
In most cases, yes. Sometimes there's someone in the building.
That we might be able to adjust.
But in other cases, then it's a, an additional staff member.
Okay. I, I, I ask these questions because I do like to make an informed decision and I feel like as we put those numbers together, we have to be sure that we're putting out the full number because that's a bigger scope than five hundred and nine thousand dollars. And again, I commend you guys for the effort that you're making and I know that this is not the first, the first thing that we're going to pull on, but we have to educate our students. So thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
I have a question, um, also about the financial impact. Um, first of all, I, I definitely value what y'all are doing. I think, um, this is like a first step toward what we might see a lot of education going to because we really need the teachers for the programs that we have and teachers are so hard to find. But my question is, um, do you know what the average cost of a teacher is in our system, like a fully loaded wage, salary benefits number, so that we can compare that to this ninety-three thousand?
That should be this ninety-three thousand.
That is in our system, then. That's not our K twelve number that we would be paying Elevate K twelve.
No.
Okay. I was reading that, that, that was the, um, okay. So that's probably the answer to what I was looking for. The ninety-three one is what Rockdale County pays there.
Sure, on average cost.
Okay.
Let me ask this question. The, the financial impact, there's a range, the minimum five hundred nine thousand, eight hundred seventeen. Uh, what is the likelihood of us getting to the high end of the eight hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventeen? And what would, what would the conditions be that would push us to the higher end of that range?
To push us to the higher end? Just staffing shortages. So if we had, if we were able to fill it without using Elevate, then we wouldn't have to go that high up. It's just, uh, based on need.
We're unable to fill certain positions over the summer. We may have to resort to more classes being taught by Elevate.
That is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
And another question for me is, um, do we now prioritize, um, the other Intelligate?
InterLage.
InterLage, sorry.
No problem.
Do we prioritize, um, prioritize InterLage over, um, Elevate if the need arises? Because it seems to be more cost-effective to go that route.
Um, as long as it's within the parameters that are approved by the board, we would try to get InterLage teachers first so that they would be here in the buildings with us. But with the Visa sponsorship, sometimes that takes several months. And so if we know they're not going to be here in time, that could be a, um, an issue if we decide really late, if we interview. if we interview someone and they can't get here for several months.
And that leads to my question. This one is, she proposed the timeline for us, starting now with her. We know that we're using this foreign program. What is our timeline for investigating how long it will take a student or a teacher from India or Jamaica or the British, one of the Virgin Islands, right? Are we looking at timelines to make sure that we're putting ourselves in a position to make those better decisions?
So depending on the countries, and I don't have like a chart that shows which ones take longer than others, but from working with that company, they'll usually let me know, like this person that you're looking at, they're eager to come, but they wouldn't be able to be here until this date. And so the best answer I can give is as soon as possible with the international candidates because everyone around us is interviewing the same people, the people who work with them anyway. So if Intellage works with Henry and Newton, then we're all interviewing the same people and making decisions in real time so that they could start the process. In most cases, they don't come here until they have been offered a position and we give documentation to support them coming to the States.
Okay, and I do have, sorry. I'll ask you offline. Thank you.
Any other Elevate questions? Okay, that's fine. See you later. Thank you all for your time.
Michelle, I want to join Heather and I know also Mandy and others who have commended the work of HR. I know that what is the common denominator between Intellage and Elevate K-12 is our desire to afford our students the most highly qualified and credentialed content proficient teacher. That's the common denominator. One model does that with the foreign-based teacher, but who is in person. The other model is remote digital, but that's the ultimate goal. And so it's good to see that there's some data, whether it's direct observational data from the principals observing the live in-person Intellage teachers or it's the Elevate K-12 that has also been observed by our, now our curriculum director, curriculum instruction director, formerly K-12 Science Health and Physical Ed Coordinator. So that's the common denominator. And these two resources meet that need in terms of highly content proficient and highly credentialed in the area. So thank you.
And for clarification, this includes benefits, correct? All those numbers that you've given us include the comprehensive benefits?
Yes, ma'am.
On both platforms?
On Elevate, we don't pay their benefits, but yes for Intellage.
Okay.
I ask this question. What was the alternative? What was the next option that was?
Long-term subs.
Okay, there was no other comparable program to Elevate that we could have explored to see if there was any cost saving?
There are other programs, yes, and that we have looked at occasionally. But there are other programs that exist. Some are synchronous and some are asynchronous. So in like, you know, in real time with the teacher where you can communicate back and forth, and some are recorded lessons.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good evening, and we ask for your patience in advance. And so the Office of Student Support Services will be presenting this evening about fifteen items for your action.
If you would, and I apologize for the interjection, but I did hear a board member, Jackson Led, have a question about the statement that we don't pay benefits for Elevate K-12. And then I think you had a question about that average ninety-three thousand dollar, which is the average for benefits plus. So what's, share, pose your question.
My question, if we don't pay the benefits, why are they equaling out to ninety-three thousand of what we would use for a teacher here in Rockdale County?
Their point allotment for those teachers. So if they use a Elevate teacher, they're actually using a point that they have in their staffing plan. So we've already approved those dollars. So if they use only one, then they're using point one-two-five of a teacher point to pay for that out of their staffing allotment. So that's an important note for that. But the ninety-three thousand, one hundred is what an average teacher costs the district to include benefits. So that's why we were using that as a comparison.
But it's not, we're not paying benefits for them. If you say we're not paying benefits, but we use the ninety-three thousand dollars to get to that five hundred, whatever the thousand was, let me go back to that screen.
Standard, she's using that to show you what six teachers would cost us if we paid them. It would cost us ninety-three thousand, one hundred dollars per teacher. So if you do that by six, we're actually coming out a little cheaper using Elevate if you extrapolate that out. Because Elevate is a contract.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm seeing what you put up there as the budget price that we're voting on. It says five hundred thousand. Let me go back to that screen, please.
That's what it costs for six Elevate teachers, for Elevate is five hundred and fifty-eight, five hundred and eight, right? So if you extrapolate it out, it costs six teachers is ninety-three, one teacher is ninety-three thousand, one hundred on average. Take it by six, it's five fifty, somebody do the math, five fifty-eight. And I think the minimum, the minimum cost, if I'm not mistaken, was five oh eight.
Five oh nine.
Five oh nine. So you can see there's a little savings there if we.
There's a fifty thousand dollar difference.
Correct.
Structure doesn't align with, like, the cost of a teacher is not what theirs is.
Good evening. So the second time will be the charm. And so we are going to ask for your patience as the Office of Student Support Services will propose tonight about fifteen items, action items for you to take action. And so I'm going to, in advance, just let you know who your presenters will be. And so from School Food Services, you will have Mr. Blaine Allen, and he is the director. And he is accompanied by the district supervisor for School Food Services, Lindsay Goddard. And then outside of that, we also have Community and Student Support, and you are familiar with the face of April Fallon. And then in addition to April Fallon, I will be accompanying the Learning Support Coordinator, Jessica Walls. And we will address those learning support requests. And then there is one additional request, and I promise we will be efficient. And so we're going to get started with School Food Services.
Good evening, board. So we have our summer meal program, which started June fifth and will go until July twentieth. Currently, we're doing about three thousand meals a day. Our lunch ladies are working extremely hard, and I applaud the work that they're doing. Being a hands-on approach, I've been over to RCA and assisting the ladies. And my hat just goes off to them, what they do every single day, getting up at five in the morning. So I appreciate that. So I just want to give the, our school lunch ladies a shout out. Our food solicitation on April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, our purchasing department opened a bid for food services for FY twenty-four. The bids were evaluated based on pricing. A qualified vendor must have K through twelve experience, provide pricing on all items indicated on the line, on the bid line, all or none. Two vendors submitted bids. Sutherland Food Service was the only full-line distributor who met the bid specifications. Therefore, our recommendation to the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract for Sutherland Food Service to furnish and deliver all the deliverables services named in the invitation bid. The price is quoted as a food service provider is five point three million dollars. The rationale, Sutherland's Food Service will provide deliverables such as applesauce, pears, raisins, mustard, pickles, ketchup, cereal bars, pizza, et cetera. The financial impact is five point three million, which will be the School Food Service funding. The next is our paper bid solicitation, which was on May twelve, twenty twenty-three. At eleven AM, Purchasing Department opened a bid paper goods for FY twenty-four. Two bids were evaluated based on pricing. Two vendors submitted bids for paper solicitation. Imperial, Dade, and Southeastern Paper. Imperial came in at three hundred and nine thousand. Southeastern came in at three eleven. Therefore, the recommendation for the superintendent will recommend Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract with Imperial Bag and Paper Company to furnish and deliver all of deliverables and services named in the invitation bid. The paper goods provider totaling three hundred and nine thousand. Imperial will provide deliverables such as lids, foil, bun, bun bags, knives, freezer bags, gloves, hairnets, and sanitizer test strips. The financial impact is three hundred and nine thousand. The bread bid solicitation on May ninth, twenty twenty-three, at eleven AM, the Purchasing Department opened a bid for bread, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. The bids were evaluated based on pricing. Bimbo Bakeries and Flower Bakery Sales of Georgia. Bimbo came in at ninety-five thousand total cost. Recommended Flowers came in at a hundred and fifty-two thousand total cost. Action item, Bimbo Bakery's new contract request. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve of a new contract with Bimbo Bakeries in the amount of ninety-five thousand. The rationale, Bimbo Bakery USA Incorporated will provide deliverables such as whole grain hamburger buns, hot dog buns, and bread. Financial impact is ninety-five thousand. Food and Safety Sanitation Chemical Bid on June seven, twenty twenty-three, at eleven AM. The Purchasing Department opened a chemical bid for Food Services for FY twenty-four. The request for proposal was evaluated based on pricing and technical evaluation. Sanitec Systems Incorporated was the only vendor that submitted a request for proposal. The recommendation is for Sanitec Services to furnish all of the deliverables and services named in the invitation bid. Quoted as chemicals totaling sixty-seven thousand and eight seventy. The rationale, Sanitec Systems will provide deliverables such as training, onsite monitoring, deliver all chemicals and cleaning supplies. The financial impact is sixty-seven thousand, eight seventy. Any questions in reference to our bid solicitation?
This is not coming out of the general fund, but through the school services funding. There is quite the disparity, I believe it was the bread bid. It's a ninety-five thousand dollar bid from Bimbo and a hundred and fifty-three thousand from Flowers Bakeries. Like, is there a vast difference in the quality of food that Flowers would be delivering to Rockdale County Public Schools over Bimbo?
No, a prime example is Flowers came in at one fifty-two, Bimbo came in at ninety-five. And when we look at the USDA regulations in terms of whole grain products that we service, all of them are equivalent. So the Bimbo products, along with Flowers, are equivalent across the board. Thank you. You are.
I have a question, not necessarily about the bid process, but do you have an overall percentage increase of how much these proposed, like for food and paper, has gone up on these bids compared to what you had last year's budget?
Liz, do you have any information? And but we've seen anywhere from eleven to twenty-five percent increase.
Okay.
Across the board. I mean, you know, when you talk about increasing.
Well, that's what is good information to know when we're looking at your future slides.
Moving in, if there's no further questions, moving into school meal charges. Supply chain issues have impacted School Food Services. There's a decline in the number of eligible suppliers and distributors willing to serve school districts. These shortages include production workers, warehouse workers, delivery drivers. Several vendors increased costs throughout the school year. Currently, the program has absorbed the additional vendor costs and will incur extra expenses for the increase of insurance premiums in January twenty-fourth. As a result, the department is recommending meal price increase increments of ten cents for the next three years. And there is a chart currently, those are our charges. And let me just say this here, school nutrition has not had a meal increase in five years. The recommendation, the superintendent will recommend the approval of the USDA mandated student meal for the twenty-three, twenty-four for the ten cent increment. The rationale, School Food Services cannot carry over debt and must remain financially independent of the general fund.
Do you have a question? How the meal pricing as proposed, how does that compare to surrounding districts, particularly Metro Risa?
In conversation with most of the school directors that I reached out to, our cost was much lower. So we were probably, maybe, I want to say just roughly, I don't have the figures in front of me, probably about twenty-five, five cents lower than everybody else across the board. Any other questions?
Well, I see that, I have a question. I see that you want to increase it for the next three years, ten cents. Can we know, can we not go by year by year versus going three-year because things may change?
So I would like to offer clarification there. So the thought of the department is that there will probably be a need to propose a ten cent increase across the next three years. However, the policy is very specific that each year annually, we must come to the board and present these prices. And so what we're asking you to take action on is not a three-year increment. That was really for your information. We're asking you to take action on the twenty-four school year.
And I understand that we're only going to be voting next week on the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, but aren't we going to be having the increase in their health benefits over a three-year period? So that would make sense that we need to consider this long-term as well because you're going to be paying more for their health benefits for your employees on your budget.
Any other questions?
I do. I have a.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, the meal intake in the cafeteria this year, has there been an increase or decrease in the selling of the meals to the students?
Looking at our numbers, our numbers pretty much stayed the same from prior year. We didn't see a. We didn't see a, um, a drop in our numbers in terms of dollar amount.
Do you have any way of being able to assess a change in adult meals that were purchased over the course of like from this year, uh, as opposed to last year?
I'm sorry, what's that question again?
Would you happen to know whether there was an increase or decrease in the purchase of adult meals this year from last year?
I think when we looked at the numbers, our adult, uh, meals pretty much stayed the I I think they were probably increased a little bit from from prior year.
Do we think or do we know? Is that information that we could get to the board?
I mean, that's something that we can share. Thank you. Share that information with.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
All right, good, good evening, Madam Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Duncan, rest of the board, Dr. Oates, Cabinet and guests. Um, so tonight I have three action items to put before you. Um, the first one, just to give you the highlights, it's our contract with Soliant Health, who provides our contracted school psychologists. Um, the second one is Academy for Family Empowerment, who provides school-based mental health therapists. And third is our, um, middle school and high school career and post-secondary planning, uh, program, which is Naviance. Okay, first, our school psychology services. So we have, um, seven school psychologist positions in Rockdale County Public Schools over the last few years due to retirement and moves and whatnot. Um, and with a national shortage of school psychologists, we've had to go with contracting school psychologists. Right now, we only have two, uh, psych- school psychologists that are actual employees. So this past year, we paid for five contracted positions. But this past year, we also had a forty-four percent increase in the number of referrals for school psychological evaluations. So it put quite a demand on our school psychologist in the department, um, as a whole. So this year I am asking for six contracted psychologist positions just to make up for some of those gaps. Because we hit and we ended up having to pay for overtime. We had to bring in independent psychologist in addition to those, um, contracted psychologists from Soliant. So we really feel there that there is a need to, um, increase the number of contracted positions. Second, moving on to school-based mental health services. I've always been very proud to say that Rockdale County Public Schools was, um, if not the first, one of the first school systems in the state to provide school-based mental health services. Uh, we we received the Stars Grant, some of you may remember from, um, in two thousand and ten. And so at that time, we contracted with a local agency, Academy for Family Empowerment. And once that grant ended, the board at the time realized the importance of providing school-based mental health services to our our students. And so we, uh, you, the the board approved continuing to have those contracted services with Academy for Family Empowerment. And it's been a fantastic relationship since, uh, two thousand and twelve. We've had a lot of good feedback from our school counselors and principals. And, um, they regularly participate in Parent Academy and other events with the school system. So we have been paying for two school-based mental health, uh, therapists. Academy for Family Empowerment, they pay for two positions as well. So they they provide us with one additional therapist. And then the other position is a lead therapist that conducts all of the intakes with the students and the families and coordinates all of that. So we, even though it says new contract, we just want to continue those services with Academy for Family Empowerment. Unfortunately, mental health issues have, uh, you know, increased nationally, and and that's no different than within the school system. And we do have some gaps in the community with providers. So we've had to get creative and kind of do some patchwork here and there. So we do have our L four G A therapist, so that's one therapist, and we've assigned her to specific schools. She primarily works with students who do not have insurance because we want to make sure that that is not a barrier for those particular students. Um, we have a relationship with Viewpoint Health, so they received a grant in two thousand and sixteen. It's called the Apex Grant from the state. And so they have provided us with two mental health therapists as well. One is, um, based at Pine Street part-time. And the other, it's kind of been intermittent because they they've had some staffing issues. But that person, um, has been serving Conyers Middle School and J H House because she was bilingual. Again, I've already talked about Academy for Family Empowerment. And then we also, um, have a relationship with Positive Growth that's based in DeKalb. But they mostly provide virtual, um, mental health therapy, just because they don't have the staffing as well to send, um, here. But they do, they do see some students, um, in person. So really, the benefit with Academy for Family Empowerment, um, the therapists are based at the traditional high schools. So there are three, so based at Salem, Heritage and Rockdale. And then we share one with Epic. And the the great thing about that is they are there every day. And so the students get to know the therapists. They become part of that school culture, and it's all about providing access for students. We've always said that we wanted to provide the school-based mental health for students who otherwise would not be able to access services. So maybe those barriers would be that, um, the parents, um, don't have transportation to take them to therapy. Because that's going to be once a week that they're seeing a therapist. Maybe they have a gap in insurance or no insurance at all. So that's why we really like having a a trained clinician in the building. And so that's what Academy for Family Empowerment provides for us at the high school level. Just a little more information about them. Um, so since two thousand and twelve, they have served seven hundred and thirty-four students. They, um, provide this fifty-minute session, so that equates to about forty-five students served per day. They do still see students over the summer, so that is when it can become virtual. The student can go to their office. And then they offer summer groups as well. We've had those in the schools in the past. And they do have pretty good discharge data, so fifty percent, uh, fifth, excuse me, fifty-six percent um, are successfully discharged with no further treatment required. Um, and then out of that total number, thirty percent of those students moved or transferred. But I would just assume from the the data that those students probably, um, were successful as well. And then fourteen percent were non-compliant. And then I just wanted to share a couple of statements from, um, school staff. So the first one is from Dr. Richards at Heritage High School. And basically, she's just saying that, um, her school-based mental health therapist had a full caseload at all times. And that the it's so nice having that skilled clinician in the building that goes beyond what a school counselor can do because they can't provide therapy. Um, they're not trained, they're, they may have the training, but they can't provide that in the school setting. So we like having those trained clinicians that provide actual therapy. Our lead school, so, uh, social worker, Ashley Robinson, made a good point. She said, you know, uh, by providing the school-based mental health services in the school, parents don't have to take off of work. And again, if we're talking about students who have weekly therapy sessions for an hour, that's a lot of time that a parent would have to leave. And then our counselor at Open Campus, Rita Woodby, made it also a good point. Just talking about the the time that it takes for a student to have to leave for an appointment. They may miss several hours of school to leave campus. But if they see a a clinician on campus, they see them for the fifty minutes and then they go back to class. So I thought those were all really, really great points. And then last, I want to talk about Naviance. I don't have a slide for that, but some of you may remember me standing with, um, our district lead counselor, Tanya Cobb, last year about this time. And we had proposed purchasing Naviance, which is a, um, a career tool. It's it's a very vast, comprehensive tool where our students are able to take career interest inventories, explore careers. They create their graduation plan and update that every year. Um, and so the main goal for Naviance this past year was to provide training to staff. And so we we did provide thirty hours of training and also trained, um, staff in other divisions. So now members of learning support are going to use Naviance as a transition planning tool for students with disabilities. So that's, that's kind of an added benefit there. We, but our main goal was so that our students would meet the bridge law requirements. So students sixth through twelfth grade have to complete for a total of nineteen tasks. And all of that gets reported to the state. That's part of the bridge law. So again, that's where they're taking those career inventories, researching high-demand careers and creating their graduation plan. So we did that, and we felt like that was a big success. One really cool thing is we, um, we met with all of our seniors at the end of the year and obtained personal email addresses. And so Naviance will give them access to the program for the full year after graduating. So maybe they didn't, you know, go to college or a university right away. But now that they've graduated, they're thinking, wow, I really, now I'm really thinking about that. They'll have access to all that they have done and completed in Naviance. There's a way for them to send their college applications through that, upload resumes, access their transcripts. And so it really is a comprehensive tool. Next year, we want to stretch the capacity. So it allows us to create our own tasks. And so we're going to use part of that, um, to create some dual enrollment tasks, some, um, readiness um, surveys for them, readiness tasks as well. We are going to put scholarships in Naviance. So this year was also about getting our students familiar with the tool itself. And now that they are, we want them to really to have that one-stop shop where everything is available to them. So, um, Tanya Cobb has done such a good job, um, pulling together a lot of local scholarships and posting those and sending those out to the schools. But now if we can put them in this one location, um, that's more accessible to students, I think that's going to be a really good benefit for our kids. So with that being said, I will move on and I certainly will pause at each one for any questions. So the recommendation is for the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract request for Soliant Health as a private provider for six school psychologists to provide school psychological services totaling seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred dollars. The contract is contingent upon the approval by the superintendent and general counsel. Soliant Health is a private provider for school psychologists. Blazer Works works with multiple private providers, including Soliant, to provide contractors. The providers are necessary to ensure that students receive appropriate psychological services. And I'll pause right there. Any questions about that?
I have a quick question. Are these six in schools in our schools?
It would, so they would be. I'm sorry.
Are they just as needed?
So we would go ahead and contract. We would like, we would like to go ahead and start the school year with those six contracted school psychologists. Three of the ones from this year are signing on again, so thank goodness. But we'd like to have three more contracted psychologists.
Are they physically in our schools?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So this would allow us to also have some onsite mental health in our schools.
Absolutely, absolutely. So they they do a lot of consultation as well. So they they will go into classrooms, consult with teachers based on what they're seeing or what the the concerns are. So, um, by pulling the strain off of the few psychologists we've had, we'll we'll be able to do more of those prevention type of services.
And April, the numbers look similar to what we were paying in overtime and consultation fees for.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, our our fee last, or what we, um, our contract last year was for five hundred and ninety-five thousand. So this just, um, is for the additional, um, school psychologists. But we have paid that through just trying to gather many, many agencies and, um, even using school psychologists from other counties in their off time. Yeah, just trying to fill the gap there. Any other questions? All right, and the next one, uh, the superintendent will recommend Rockdale County Publics, uh, I'm sorry, Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract request for Academy for Family Empowerment Services as a private provider for two school-based mental health specialists to provide therapeutic services for students totaling one hundred and eight thousand dollars. The contract is contingent upon the approval by the superintendent and general counsel. Academy for Family Empowerment is a private provider for school-based mental health therapists. The therapists are necessary to ensure that students and families receive the appropriate mental health supports. And again, this is just a continuation of what we we have been providing. And so last, we have the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the renewal contract for Power School Group, which is Naviance, totaling seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-six cents. The contract is contingent upon the approval by the superintendent and general counsel. Power School Group LLC is the provider of Naviance software. Naviance helps students uncover strengths and interests and make informed decisions about their futures with tools such as Gallup's Clifton Strengths Explorer, Career Interest Profiler, Career Key, and Achieve Works Assessments. This program meets the Georgia Department of Education Bridge Bill requirements for career exploration.
What schools are we, um, where's Naviance now?
So it is all middle and all high schools. And and like I said, this year we are expanding that to use it with students with disabilities as well.
We already have a contract for Naviance. Is there been, is this comparable to what it cost last year? I apologize, I'm new to the boards, I don't know what it costs last year.
It's actually a little less.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Um, I do have a question. I I know the power of Naviance, especially at the, um, I'm not too familiar with the mentor, all of the other, uh, components of it. Who's overseeing it at the high school level, um, to make sure that the students, because it is a powerful tool for college readiness, um, scholarships, um, recommend, letters of recommendations from teachers, all the wonderful things that you don't have to bombard the, um, the guidance counselors with. So who oversees it at the high school level as students, um, get into their senior years?
So within the building, that's going to be the high school counselors. But Tanya Cobb has that district level access, so she's constantly monitoring to make sure that students are meeting those tasks through Bridge Bill. She's, um, pulling reports to see percentages and actual hard numbers of how many students are using what components of that. And so she's already made her list from this year, seeing the data of where she needs to focus for this upcoming year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Duncan, other board members and and Dr. Oates. Today was, today was an interesting. So I am here to speak to you all about, um, learning support. Dr. Howard is still out, so I'm one of the coordinators, as Dr. Smith Dixon did mention. So as far as speech and language services go, the caseloads, um, for speech and language pathologists is fifty-five students by the State Board of Education rule. The average caseload here in Rockdale County Public Schools is fifty-five students. R C P S employs twenty-one S L Ps, one of which is part-time, which includes fourteen S L Ps who are contract personnel and seven direct hours hires for R C P S. Um, R C P S has decreased the total number of contract agencies by two. And so I will, um, talk about that in just a moment. So there below, you can see the caseloads as they were for this school year. And then what we will start with at the start of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The number of students with speech as primary eligibility this year was one hundred and eighty-three, whereas next year we will be starting with two hundred and four. The number of students with speech as a secondary area of eligibility is seven or for this school year was seven hundred and forty-one, whereas we will start with eight hundred and sixty-eight. And there, lastly, you can see the total number served by speech pathologists for this school year was nine hundred and twenty-four, and next school year, um, will be one thousand and seventy-two. And so this, um, this slide shows you the contract for the action items. You can see the names of the contractors and then the personnel that they provide as well as the amounts. There's Stepping Stones Group, Nicole Boland, who is with Metro Speech Works LLC, Alvery Boyd, who is with Speech Blossoms LLC, Doretha Glenn, who is an independent contractor, Ebony Biggs is with Speech Vision, Speech Vision LLC, and then also Soliant Health. So the action items, the recommendation for Stepping Stones is that the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract requesting for Stepping Stones Group LLC as a private provider for speech and language services as outlined in the individual education plans for students with disabilities, which would total one mil- one point one million, a little over, one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred dollars. The rationale being that Stepping Stones Group LLC is a private provider for speech and language pathologists. The providers are necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability serves a free, receives, excuse me, a free appropriate public education. The next action item is for independent contractor. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract for Nicole Boland, who is with Metro Speech Works LLC as a private provider for speech language pathologist to provide speech services as outlined in the I E Ps for students with disabilities totaling ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred or, excuse me, eight hundred dollars. The rationale is that Nicole Boland with Metro Speech Works is a private provider for speech language pathologists, the provider. The provider, again, is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives a free, appropriate public education. The next is for Alvery Boyd with Speech Blossoms. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract request for Alvery Boyd as a private provider for speech and language pathologist to provide speech services as outlined in the IEPs for students with disabilities totaling $98,800. The rationale is that Alvery Boyd is a private provider for speech language pathologists. The provider is necessary, again, to ensure that the, each student with an identified speech disability receives a free public, a free, appropriate public education. Excuse me. The next action item, again, is for independent contractor. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract request for Ebony Biggs with Speech, Speak Vision as a private provider for a speech language pathologist to provide speech services as outlined in the IEPs for students with disabilities totaling $98,800. The rationale being that Ebony Biggs with Speak Vision is a private provider for speech language pathologist. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with identified speech disability receives a free, appropriate public education. And then the independent contractor with Doretha Glenn. The superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract request for independent contractor Doretha Glenn as a private provider for speech language pathologist to provide speech services as outlined in the IEPs for students with disabilities totaling $103,360. The rationale is that the independent contractor is a private provider for speech language pathologists. The provider is necessary to ensure that each student with an identified speech disability receives a free, appropriate public education. So then the action item with Soliant Health would be a new contract for learning support. The recommendation is that the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve a new contract request of Soliant Health LLC as a private provider for one occupational therapist and one physical therapist to provide special education and related services as outlined in the individualized education program for students with disabilities totaling $178,425. The rationale is that Soliant Health LLC is a private provider for occupational therapists and physical therapists. Blazer Works works with multiple private providers, including Soliant, to provide contractors. The providers are necessary to ensure that each student receive appropriate, free, appropriate public education for students with disabilities for those related services. Any questions?
Total was 1 million, 1.1 million, right? This is not 1.1, I'm sorry. I, I was looking away at your first slide. Can you go back to the first slide for me one second?
For Stepping Stones?
The other one.
1.1.
1.1.
Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am.
1.7.
1.7. Did I say 1.1? I'm sorry.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I do have a question. If we hired an SLP, if they were an employee of Rockdale County Public Schools rather than being contract labor, what would, what would that cost be to the county?
So I will defer to HR, but my understanding is an SLP would be paid on a teaching scale. So it's going to be equivalent to what you heard earlier.
Okay, so the, so we'd be working on the average at $91,800?
93.
93, correct. I was just saying how it comes. Sure, we hired him. And, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
On your occupation and part-time PT, can you break down according to which one is occupation, which one is PT? Or that's just the contract that you? Yeah.
I can certainly get that information for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And can I clarify the question again?
How much the occupation is being paid and how much the PT is being paid?
Yes, ma'am.
And I believe on the actual contract that's made available to the public, there is a pricing sheet there, but I will also look at that as well to see if it is the total amount per OT and the total amount per PT.
Do I have a question? So who oversees the services provided by the speech language pathologists? Would that be, I've no especial ed, so would that be the lead teacher of compliance for special education?
So within the buildings, yes. And then there is a coordinator that oversees the SLPs as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the final item for tonight is in regards to a current contract we're in for eyesight, for customer expressions. Essentially, for this particular contract, it is a case management platform that is intended to be used for the purpose of management of the Title IX process as required for federal responsibility. And so we entered into this contract back in 2021. The intent of this contract was that it was going to be a multi-year contract. And so next year would be out last year of the contract. The annual cost to the contract is $7,000 each year. Obviously, in light of looking at things through a budgetary perspective, we, the funding is not available to continue with this contract. Based on the stipulation is outlined in the agreement, in order for us to terminate the contract with a particular vendor, we have to have board support to get out of the contract. And so this is probably the best item for tonight because there is absolutely no financial impact. It is a consideration for, just based on what's available to us and what's not available to us. And so the actual recommendation is that the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the termination of the Eyesight Customer Expressions Corporation contract, which makes available case management software to support implementation of the Title IX regulations. The district would exercise the termination clause because safety net funds are no longer available for this specific purpose. I do think it is important to say publicly, it does not terminate our responsibility to implement and to execute Title IX. That is not what this request is about. It is just about terminating the contract because of funding, and we would not use that platform to organize the information.
So what will be used in the alternative?
The options that we have now, shared folders, shared drives. The dynamics of the platform, which is really outside of the budgetary restraint, but the dynamics of the platform allows for a limited number of users. And so for us, if you are familiar with the Title IX process, we share it from the county office perspective as the district Title IX person, but we have teams locally. So for us, in that particular instance, the platform would require us to have enough license within the platform to manage it for over 22 programs. And so with your familiarity of Title IX, you know, it's not just a K-12 regulation. It's also governed by higher ed. So when you also look at the dynamics of the platform and how it's set up and how it's, how it works, it really is managed easier with the higher ed folks instead of the K-12. But essentially, this request is not about that. That's additional information. It's really just based on the budget.
But during, I have, Emma, during the budget hearing, we expressed how important for us to have that Title IX coordinator. But now we want to come back and take away two that they've been using for the past three years. Is there not somewhere else in the budget we can cut for? Instead of getting rid of that? Since Title IX is so important, and as it was emphasized.
Title IX is very important. It's not only important, it's the law. The bottom line of it is, we always have to think from a perspective of, while we have access to it, even if money were not an issue, could we manage the work differently outside of the platform? You know, I can tell you from having had the person who actually led Title IX from the district, for the district, leave in December and taken on that responsibility until additional help was made available in July, it can be managed outside of the platform. And so we also have to think about it. Title IX is not something we do here at the county office. We're doing it based on what happens in school buildings. And so we also have to be mindful of the impact of having great technology, software. What does that mean for a building-level administrator, a building-level team? What is that impact going to be for them to manage, to learn, to navigate? And so simply said, sometimes we can be inconvenienced to make it more convenient for our school-based staff. So in light of the budget and a lot of the process, the recommendation is to terminate the contract. It will not impact the district's ability to implement Title IX. I can assure you that.
As, as we look for ways to cut the budget, I'm pleased with the fact that we are actually cutting something. So, so the, the statement made is that we're looking for ways to do it. Have we identified the replacement? You know, because I know in, in dealing with the Title IX coordinator, a part of that is that there are a lot of changes coming to Title IX. So do we have the capacity to address it?
So we do have the capacity to address it. As I shared earlier, I've done it as an extra duty myself since January. And so based on that process, it can be done. It is being done. We use the shared process, shared folder. So as an example, if there is an inquiry or concern, you may be aware that we have a formal form that we share. So we have that process, but we have shared folders. So it's just a matter of building out that folder and having common documents that we share back and forth with the school. So we've had several investigations and it's been managed fine. Outside of the platform.
So it's not something you're, you're currently doing it? Great. Thank you.
No questions?
Madam Chair, before our chief financial officer takes the podium, I do want to, of course, I think we all know that our board has been recognized on seven different occasions as an exemplary board. And one of our action items is that we'll be pursuing that, that process again for exemplary board recognition. I know they talked a little bit about that at our summer GSBA conference that we, that many of us attended recently. So just wanted to duly note that, to thank you. All right. Thank you. Keith.
All righty. Good evening, Madam Chair Brown, Madam Vice Chair Duncan, Dr. Oats, board members. I'll be going over the preliminary financial reports for May, and then I have a one action item. The revenue for the month of May is 12.1 million. Year-to-date's 177.1 million, which is 97.9% of our budget. In the prior period, we received 11.1 million, 173.8 million, which was 101.4% of our budget. Expenditure for the month of May, 17.8 million, 172.8 year-to-date, which is 93.7% of our budget. 14.6 in the prior period, 14.6 million for May, 160.3 million year-to-date, which is 93.5% of our budget. Let me just note right there that the big difference between last year and this year is the health insurance hit us for our certified folks. They prorated a couple of months, so you can see what it did to us right there. It's about 3 million more because of that. The outstanding encumbrances, 1,977,781. Our fund balance at the end of May is roughly 42.9 million. Last year, our fund balance was roughly 42.3 million. Our assets, 49.6, our liability, 6.7. Those are our third-party payments, which will be cleared up. And our fund balance is 42.9. The action item is approval of the budget. There are no changes from the tentative budget to the current budget. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education formally adopt FY24 final budget as presented. Georgia Department of Education rationale, Georgia Department of Education requires board approval on all operating budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Madam Chairwoman, if I could give a real-time response to a question of both. We've gotten, we've gotten confirmation that the school food service's adult participation increased by 7% from last year to this year.
Thank you, Dr. Oats.
All right, the cabinet has provided numerous presentations under the section Information. And I would like for the board to review this information at your leisure. Please review the May 2023 board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There is no old business and there is no new business. The cabinet has provided an overview of the action items for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action items to be placed on a consent agenda?
I make a motion to put the action items on a consent agenda, all with exception of the voting for the budget.
Okay. So a motion has been made to consider action items. Let's see, which one is that?
Number two.
One through 25, with the exception of number two, to vote on separately as. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Wait, I think Heather did not vote.
Oh, you didn't? No?
I didn't, no.
Okay. So, 6-2, 1. All right. Motion carries. There is no board discussion. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and school safety plans?
Second, Heather.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and school safety plans has been made by Ms. Jones and second by Ms. Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Will we go? Professional Learning Room.
Why is it twisting if it doesn't unscrew, you know? We're going into big name, big name over here. Yep, yep, yep.
He has, you know, sometimes, but not very often, asked us to vote on a hire for something that, um, if he needs to get somebody in there fast. That's not the norm.
Hey, Keith, you and Tim.
So do you want me to bring you back up here? I swear, I'm making some sudafed. I've gone through two bottles of water plus that. Oh, I can do that. That'd be like, I can come over to.
Happy Father's Day, everyone.
Happy Father's Day, everyone.
What else is he being touched by discussing shower liners and replacing them every single month? This gadget pops onto the current rod and has an origami design that keeps the liner away from your body. Makes the shower feel big, has a built-in splash guard and is machine washable. And this scrubber sucks into the shower walls to get free up your hands for other things while scrubbing those hard to reach spots. Anyone else see being touched by just?
How she spend a week on grocery?
Hi Jennifer.
Hi.
Oh, it's that blonde line, oh, it's a blonde line, ready for, oh, wait.
Another a-hole for refusing to pay for my stepdaughter's wedding because her real daddy is the one that's gonna walk her down the aisle. So let me tell you guys about my stepdaughter, alright? She wants her real daddy to walk her down the aisle. But let me give you a backstory on me and my stepdaughter.
She just graduated from university, so we turned acorns into pancakes, so.
You have a long morning?
Gotta get the hair tied up, oh, with the hair tie, something, no, I got it out finally.
That's just confidence Tika right there, that's just her confidence.
I don't care anymore.
You're so beautiful. Do you have a?
This two and a half year old is about to discover something that's going to ruin his day, but it's necessary. He noticed something was wrong with his pacifiers, his parents caught them. His mom struggled not to laugh as she realized what had happened. He of course started crying. His mom asked if something ate them. He said yes. She suggested a bug ate the pacifiers. He said yeah. Now he will think bugs eat.
Bella from that spot.
Oh, want me to put you in forever?
Yes.
One little time.
Okay, fine.
Have you seen this? It looks way too good to be true, so that means we gotta try it. My hair is completely dry except the hair sitting underneath the clip. The clip makes it a little bit difficult to dry that area, but because I wanna give this technique the benefit of the doubt, I'm gonna let this air dry for a few hours and come back with the results. The roots are wet, I'm gonna leave it in a little longer. Let's try this again. It's still wet. It'll be a no for me. Have you seen this? It looks way too, I never had that before, I am so excited.
Oh, sorry.
Every, every single meal I make.
Oh, we did a little bit spicy here.
Every time we go out.
I was just a little bit spicy there.
Spicy noodle challenge. Noodle, noodle.
This is the most ambitious rainbow soap I have ever tried. This is going to be a rainbow soap that I am pouring like I did the Princess and the Frog in the Fire Nation soap. So I'm pouring this at a very low temperature before it solidifies and just going layer by layer by layer by layer by layer by layer. But with six colors. So a little bit trickier because the soap hardens in between use and when I'm using six colors, it kind of takes a little bit to get back to the like first color that I need to use. So I need to be reheated again and then going back in. So there's a lot more process, but then I got that mat that you saw at the beginning with the roses and I was really excited to make some rainbow roses for the top of the soap too. So each soap bar is going to have different rainbow roses that are going to be so beautiful. I'm very excited to get into this and very nervous to get into this. Make your guesses on what you think the soap is going to look like and what we should call this soap. I think it's safe to say this is the most ambitious rainbow.
Science interrogation.
It is now ten twenty eight P M and the board has come back into open session. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to assign Ms. Kimberly Dyer, currently Assistant Principal at Davis Middle School, to principal at Davis Middle School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty three? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and a second by Ms. North. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Okay, six to one. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to assign Ms. Fanata Gooden, currently Assistant Principal at Conyers Middle School, to Assistant Principal at Davis Middle School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty three?
Second, Akita Palmer.
Motion has been made by Ms. North and second by Ms. Palmer. Any discussion? All in favor. By the two. Motion is carry. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to assign Ms. Melanie Daniel, currently Instructional Coach at Davis Middle School, to Assistant Principal at Conyers Middle School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty three?
So moved.
Uh, it was no by Ms. Jones, Janie Jones, and no by Sandra Jackson Lett. Okay, so again, um, the recommendation for Ms. Melanie Daniel, currently Instructional Coach at Davis Middle School to Assistant Principal at Conyers Middle School. So moved. Uh, motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. North. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries five with two noes. Ms. Sandra Jackson Lett voted no and Ms. Dan- Ms. Jones votes no. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to assign Mr. Jaron Hutchins, currently Digital Learning Specialist at Edwards Middle School, to Assistant Principal at Edwards Middle School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty three?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan and second by Ms. North. Any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries six to one with no- a no vote from Janie Jones. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to assign Ms. Jermaine Blakely, currently Assistant Administrator at Rockdale County High School, to Assistant Principal at Rockdale County High School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty three?
So moves. Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries five with one no vote from Ms. Janie Jones. I'm at six to one, sorry. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to assign Mr. Ronnie Bonyard, currently Student Disproportionality Specialist at Atlanta Public Schools, to Assistant Principal at Rockdale High School effective July the first, two thousand and twenty three?
So moves.
A motion has been made by Ms. Duncan, second by Ms. North. Any discussion? All in favor. Motion carries six to one with a no vote from Ms. Janie Jones. Do I hear a motion to go back into executive session to discuss personnel?
So moved.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Mr. Justin Kenny and second by Ms. Sandra Jackson Lett. All in favor. Thank you.
I would be mindful if you can start the process.
So who do I turn it over to? Just give it.
Here, I'll see where to put.
Okay. Well. It is now ten forty-two and the board is back into open session. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Jones and second by Ms. North. All in favor? Unanimously approved. Good night everyone.